And good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, February ninth, February 7th, 22, Board of Commissioners Meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell everybody, as we celebrate Black History Month, and all of the accomplishments and achievements of African-Americans throughout history, that we also take a time to remember and reflect on those African-Americans that worked right here in Cumberland County, that were our neighbors and our friends, and made this a much better county for us. So with that, I will call on Commissioner Evans to give us our invocation and pledge.
Dear Lord, our holy Father, it's once again that we come before you with open arms or asking for your blessings and your grace and your mercy, Lord. Please bless each and every one of us that are assembled here today to do the will of the people here in our county. Continue to bless each and every family that's represented here, and help us to make sound decisions on important matters that affect each and every one of us. In Jesus Christ's name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can get County Manager Tracy Jackson. How you doing, Tracy? We're glad to have you here today and lead us right through this session.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm filling in this morning for our County Manager, Amy Cannon. The only item that we have is requested change from the County Attorney, is for a closed session for under GS 143-318-11A3.
Wait a minute, go a little slow. Somebody's got to make that motion. 143.
318, 11A3, for Attorney-client.
Alright. Thank you so very much.
And, Mr. Chair, that's for the discussion and direction of the Board on the pending case of Cedar Creek Capital LLC versus the county.
Alright. Thank you. Alright. So if I can get a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of.
Alright. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Alright. We've got a presentation from our Soil and Water Conservation District. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, let me introduce Mrs. Greta Steffens. She's our new Administrative Program Officer at the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District Office. And as you may know, Donna Foster, who'd been with us for many, many years, retired at the end of December, and Greta started in January. She comes to us from Sampson County Soil and Water Office, that has many years of experience administering soil and water programs, and delivering environmental education to school-aged children and her peers. And we're very fortunate and thankful to have Ms. Steffens on our team and with us here this morning.
Well, welcome. Welcome to Cumberland County, and we're glad to have you, and thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Let's get started. Hopefully. There we go. As I said, my name is Greta, or he said, my name is Greta Steffens. I'm the Administrative Program Officer for the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. I prepared this presentation with in mind to give you a little background on soil and water, and exactly what we do. We're located over at the Agricultural Center, near the Crown Coliseum, that area on Mountain We are under Mr. Tracy Jackson, who's our Assistant County Manager, but we work as a program that is an extension of the state, which is the Division of Soil and Water, under the Department of Agriculture. We run under a five-person board of supervisors, two of which are appointed by the county, and the other three which are elected in our general elections. At this time, we have Mr. Collier, who's our chairman, Mr. Clifton McNeil, who is our Vice Chairman, Wingate Killier, who's our Secretary, and then our other two members are Monique McMillan and Lena Simmons. As far as staff is concerned, there's myself, and Mitchell Miller, who is a soil conservationist. The mission of the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District is to take technical, financial, and educational resources, and administer programs designed to encourage individual responsibility to conserve, improve, and sustain our soil and water resources for future generations. A little bit of history of soil and water districts. Back in the 1930s, we were, we had the Dust Bowl. I think you probably have heard of it from your history lessons. The Dust Bowl in the 1930s was hit around the same time as the Great Depression. So it was caused by a lack of conservation, severe droughts, and over-farming of the land at that time. And what happened was, the crops failed because of the drought, prices of wheat went down, farmers trying to recoup their losses started plowing up more and more and more of the Great Plains. And so the Nashville grasses that were originally there were no longer holding the soil down to the ground. And with the drought and the wheat, the wind just came and blew the dirt away. By the end of 1934, roughly 35 million acres of farmland were rendered completely useless, and the topsoil covering 125 million acres had blown away. A dust storm two miles high, so it was like a tsunami, traveled 2,000 miles before hitting the East Coast, and that's from the Midwest, that's from the Great Plains area. And for five hours, a fog of prairie dust enshrouded landmarks such as the Statue of Liberty and the U.S. Capitol, inside which lawmakers with President Franklin Roosevelt were debating a conservation bill. One of President Roosevelt's advisors was Mr. Hugh Hamid Bennett. Mr. Bennett was from North Carolina. He grew up a farmer. He grew up on a cotton farm in Anson County. So he timed his presentation just right, so that all he had to do, because the dust storm hit right as he was giving his presentation, and all he had to do is point out the windows and say, "Look, this is what I'm talking about." And they passed the Soil Conservation Bill, which set up the Soil Conservation Services under the Department of Agriculture. This later became NRCS, which is the Natural Resources Conservation Service. So in the 1930s, the Soil Conservation Service needed friendly local face for farmers, because, you know, they were, you know, after the Great Depression and everything that happened, they were a little suspicious of government officials. So they wanted people locally to run a Soil and Water Board. So in 1937, the Soil Conservation Districts were organized to lead conservation planning at the local county level. And the first Soil and Water Conservation District was in 1937, in Hugh Hamid Bennett's hometown in Anson County. So North Carolina housed the first Soil and Water Conservation District. And Hugh Hamid Bennett became known as the father of conservation. In December, right after Christmas in 1946, the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District received a charter from the Secretary of State, and entered into a memorandum of understanding with the USDA, and a supplemental memorandum of understanding with the Soil Conservation Service, which is, as I said, now NRCS. These agreements are still in effect today, and ensure that the citizens of Cumberland County are provided with assistance to protect soil, water, and related resources through conservation programs. We provide conservation technical assistance. So this is voluntary help that we provide to landowners and land users to address opportunities and concerns or problems related to the use of natural resources. We assist in creating confined animal waste management plans, conservation plans, and nutrient management plans. We also assist municipal erosion issues, tax assessments, and water point mapping for like local fire departments and such stuff. All of our programs are voluntary-based. We are not a regulatory system, so we do not enforce laws upon anybody, and we do not force farmers to take our recommendations. The first program is the North Carolina Ad-Cost Share Program. This addresses water quality issues by properly managing nutrients, and managing pesticides, and reducing the amount of sediment that is delivered downstream. Applicants can be reimbursed for up to 75% for installing best management practices to address water quality concerns. Examples, cropland conversion to grass or trees, cover crops, and conservation tillage. More than 60 best management practices are in these categories: sediment and nutrient loss, animal waste, stream protection, erosion, and nutrient reduction. These are some examples of cover crops, stream protection, conservation tillage, riparian buffers, and grass-water waste. The AgRec Program, or the Agricultural Water Resources Assistance Program, identifies opportunities to increase water through efficiency, availability, and storage through agricultural water supply ponds, pond sediment removal, wells, irrigation conservation, and microirrigation. These are just some examples of some wells that have been installed to irrigate crops and to provide drinking water for livestock. The CCAP Program, the Community Conservation Assistance Program, is a voluntary incentive-based program designed to improve water quality and control stormwater through installations of various best management practices on urban, suburban, and rural lands, not directly involved with agricultural production. So these can involve backyard rain gardens, backyard wetlands, permeable pavement, stormwater conveyance, cisterns, and stream bank stabilization for urban areas. And I think in this area, you know, we have a lot of, you know, fandles become so big and so much, you know, spread out through it. We have, this program could really help a lot. And here's some examples. And this is mostly to keep the water running, so when it rains and stormwater comes, it's not flooding everything into the streets. This is just some examples there. We also have been fortunate enough to run some disaster program, response programs that were initiated to help landowners through difficulties that were caused by Hurricanes Matthew and Florence. And since then, we have removed stream debris from creeks and rivers, repaired non-field farm roads, and repaired ponds. These are some pictures of some areas that we helped clear out. Because basically what happens, you know, is you get those storms, and you get the trees and everything fall into the water, and then your water stops moving, and it gets dammed up. This is some culverts that were washed out that we helped replace. Additional programs, watershed initiatives, the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistant Program, or STRAP, is one that we've recently started. Then we are working on the Flea Hill Drainage through watershed protection and flood prevention. And also, we've put in an application hoping to do Harrison Creek. Right now, the Impaired Impactive Streams Initiative, we're working on Beaver Dam Creek. Emergency watershed protection program, and funds from, as I said, Hurricane Florence for projects such as Flea Hill Drainage, Cedar Creek, Peters Creek, Dan, several others. We also partner with NRCS. We have an NRCS employee in our office, and they run their own programs, but we work together to get these done for, we help them go out to the field and help them, and they help come out to the field and help us. So they have environmental quality incentive programs, which provides financial and technical assistance to agriculture and forestry producers to address natural resource concerns and deliver environmental benefits, such as improved water and air quality, conserve ground and surface water, and reduce soil erosion and sedimentation. The Conservation Stewardship Program is designed to build on farms' existing conservation efforts with strengthening operation. They also have CRP, which is geared towards removing environmentally sensitive land from ag-production and replant it and do it with something else, just to let it lay fallow, basically, for years. And you can plant hardwood trees and things of that nature on that land, and along replant. Prep, also, same type of thing, trying to get the land to lay on. Okay. Programs for education outreach, we work, hopefully, when schools get back in, we work closely with the local schools to increase awareness and lifelong stewardship of natural resources through outreach. We, some of our programs are at the North Carolina Envirothon. We do teachers workshops. As a matter of fact, I'm leaving here today to go to Tyrell County to teach a teacher's workshop after this. We do classroom presentations. There's a Resource Conservation Workshop. The Resource Conservation Workshop is where we send students to NC State for a week-long conservation immersion, where they're hands-on, and they live at the college and everything. So we have posters, essays, and speech contests. We do land judging, and we work with the Earth Day Festival. The Area 7 Envirothon is held at Jones Lake this year. North Carolina Envirothon is at Cedar Park, and the National Conservation Foundation Envirothon will be held in Ohio. These are just some pictures of some students that I've interacted with over the years through the Resource Conservation Workshop, through Envirothon, through Earth Day, this speech contest I had mentioned before. We honestly believe that if you teach children young, right?
Right.
They're supposed to grow up in the way they're taught, right? So we would like to teach them to be better stewards of the earth. Adult conservation education, we do foodland people workshops for teachers, for homeschool adults who are working with their children, to teach them things with environmental education. We do the, I'm involved in the Envirothon School for Teachers Advisors, which is held in Raleigh. It's a week-long immersion for teachers that plan on working with teams for Envirothon. Envirothon is very important, because it, not only does it go at the local level, which is nine counties, but it goes on to the state level, and then the national level, which is actually an international level, because we have students competing in this from not only the United States, but from Canada and from China. And it's, there's scholarship opportunities, there's a lot of things that we're doing. We also, grain drill rental. We have a fundraiser where we try to sell seedling trees. This year's not been that good, because we haven't been able to find any seedling trees.
What's that in the middle?
Excuse me, Steffens. He asked, what was that in the middle of the grain? I guess it's.
It's a type of pine.
It's a what?
It's a pine.
A pine tree.
A pine tree.
You used to the longleaf pine.
Okay.
But that's a different pine.
Yeah, they're just little babies. And then we also do rain barrels. We make the rain barrels ourselves and sell those as a fundraiser.
What you doing, Ray?
Last year, we obligated over $700,000 in conservation practices to address natural resources concerns in Cumberland County. These funds were in the form of direct payments and incentives to farmers and landowners to install on-farm conservation practices through programs with Cumberland Soil and Water and NRCS. We raised over $8,000 in revenue for Cumberland County in grain drill rentals, and we reached hundreds of adults and students through outreach, education, and just doing our job. There you go. That's it. Again, I'm Greta Steffens, I'm the Administrative Program Officer for Cumberland County Soil and Water.
Thank you, Ms. Steffens. I'll tell you, I like the rain barrel.
Thank you.
Give me another one. Mr. Key.
Yeah, thank you for coming. There's a lot of programs here, and some of them I was not aware of. If someone was to want to apply for any of these programs, is it all available on the website, or should they make an appointment, or what should they do?
It would probably be better to come to the office and make an appointment, to call and actually make an appointment.
And what sort of information would you want that person to bring with them?
The initial application just needs to involve, of course, you know, your personal information, and basically, we would look at the track of land, soil types, whether or not a wetland determination had been done on that piece of land, and find out exactly what it was you were trying to accomplish, and how we could work together to best accomplish those needs.
Okay.
Every application that is considered, applications are ranked. We have a limited amount of funds every year that were granted by the state. And in those fundings, because the applications are ranked, we go with the top priorities and what's going to have the biggest impact on conservation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, sir. I've just got a couple of questions. Did you work with a couple of, four, five years back with the NC Grange at 71st High School?
I did not.
You did not? Okay.
She just came from Sampson County. You were a little late. She's one of our newest employees.
Alright. Alright, would you estimate, or do you know if student participation in any of these programs are on the increase, flatlined, or on the increase over the last three years or so?
We've, we expected, we had a lower number of students, just because of, you know, being able to get into the schools and that. And with the things that teachers are doing right now, trying so hard to keep their classrooms going, taking on an extra role as an advisor for some of the competitions, it's just been, you know, of course, we still have ones that are participating, we're still running it, we still, we had virtual events last year, the year before, we had to cancel, but the whole nation canceled, you know, it wasn't just us.
I saw the slide a couple back where the educators can come to programs and get certified and learn more about it. Is there a same program for students?
I don't know that there, I mean, they can come to those, yes, but I don't know if there's, as far as earning, there's a certification for conservation education, environmental education thing that's given out by the state. I do not know that they have an age limit on that. So if a high school student wanted to start it, most likely she could.
Would they get actual, is there some program, even if it's not here just yet, that the students can actually get credit in doing something, where they learn how to do something for a lifetime?
They would get credit towards that certification, but as far as like a college credit, is that what you're asking? No.
It's not covered in the Huskins Bill or anything like that at all for us?
Not at all.
Hands-on, okay. And do you rent anything other than the grain drills?
Not at this much.
Okay. Is there a, do you get phone calls about, other than grain drills, do you have pickup trucks or?
I've only been here since January, so I'm really not sure.
Okay. I'll give you your number.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Steffens, I just, just a couple, that's a lot of, a lot of work that's there. What's your staff look like?
Well, like I said, there's just myself and one other person.
Yeah, that's a lot of work for two people.
It is a lot.
So I want you to know that that's very impressive for all that you all have done with just two people. My last one is, because I see it up in the Durham and the Eno River and all that, do we have a program? I saw the big things to clean out the streams. Do we have an ongoing thing where we may go down to help clean out the streams and some of those things? Not the big ones, but some of the small ones. I see it up on the Eno River and all of those places.
We are currently working on several projects for stream debris removal, so we do, as far as a, most of that is contracted out. So as far as, you know, it might not be a bad idea to get together a volunteer-type situation. I know in Sampson County, we did have that, so it might be something I would be interested in looking into, too. That's a great, thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that to us. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, I neglected to recognize two people in the audience that are joining us this morning in support of Ms. Steffens. We have the Chairman of the Soil and Water Board, Mr. Wayne Collier.
I thought I saw Mr. Collier out there.
And Mrs. Lena Simmons.
And Ms. Simmons, welcome. Thank you all. She's doing an excellent job, but all of that that she has on the plate. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Steffens, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to Team Cumberland County. We are glad to have you. And, and the reason I'm smiling is because this is the first time in 12 years that I've been sitting on this board, that someone has gave, has given us a thorough account
Oh, thank you.
of history on this particular Cumberland Soil and Water. So thank you so much for it, and we appreciate it, I'm sure we all appreciate it. And I just want to welcome you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything that you've done here today, informing us.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. He said, he couldn't say it, didn't say it any better. Thank you, Ms. Steffens.
Thank you.
Alrighty. That would take us to our consent agenda. Mr. Jackson.
Anything?
Yes, sir. No changes that I'm aware of.
Anybody into the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
Some of.
If I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
There are no items of business this morning. That takes us to the nominations, and I will call on Vice Chairwoman Stewart to handle the nominations.
For the Equalization and Review Board, there are four vacancies. To the Appraisal Category, Charles Grantis. Industrialist Category, William Holland. In the At-Large Category, Rodney Sherrell and Tracy Henderson.
That takes us to the Mid-Carolina Aging Council.
To the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council, there are three vacancies. The Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council recommends the following. To the Consumer Category, Jeanette Jordan, Huffman, and Verice McKay. To the Veterans Hospital Representative Category, Audrey Kizzy.
And that takes us, nominations for the Joint Fort Bragg and Cumberland County Food Policy.
The Joint Fort Bragg and Cumberland County Food Policy Council recommendation nominations are as follows. The Co-Chair Military Chair from Fort Bragg, Category Lieutenant Colonel Joseph. Member who does not work in Local Government, Category Lauren Tyler. Member involved in the Local Farming and Agriculture, Category Aaron Poliski. I said that name wrong, but we'll go with that. Members representing Cumberland County School District, Category Sabrina Steigleman.
And I know how that is, because I used to have to call out those names also. So we apologize if anybody, if it was mispronounced. That's hard, man. That takes us to the appointments. Vice Chair- That takes us to the appointments. Vice Chairwoman Stewart?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following nominees to the Home and County Care Block Grant Committee. The nominees are Delores Boyer, Rebecca Rebek, Kevin Walker, Deborah Kenny, and Felicia Johnson.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And that takes us to the Mid-Carolina Aging Council category?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jackie Warner to the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council in the elected official category.
Is there a second?
Second. Sorry.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. That would take us to the closed session. If I can get a motion to go in closed session pursuant to 143-318-11 slash A subsection 3 for litigation.
So who?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
Alright, we will go into closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And with, okay. With there nothing else being on the agenda, I would make, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so very much. We are adjourned. Thank you.